Thank you all. Okay, so moving into Board Business. First order of business is to approve the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that passes four to zero. All right, so our first order of business is an overview of the process on how we select the Cape Fear Community College Board of Trustees appointee. So each candidate will have 15 minutes to interview. Per Board Policy, 2660 Board Appointments to outside committees to answer the same six questions from our Board members. We will go ahead and select our questions now. So my suggestion would be that I'll go ahead and start on question number one. When we'll start over here, Ms. Justice will ask question number two, Ms. Walker will ask question number three, Mr. Wilderbor will ask question four, Mr. McManus will ask question five, and then I will finish up with question six and wrap up that interview. At the conclusion of the interview, each candidate was free to stay and listen to the other interviews and to the discussion and deliberation and final selection of the appointees. As decided at the May 3 Board Meeting, voting will be done via closed ballot, and each of us has a blue card for reporting that vote. And then we will give our cards to Ms. Bowie, our Board Clerk, to tally. Ms. Bowie will report the results to us. A majority vote is necessary, and today that majority vote would be three. With an odd number of Board members, there should not be a tie, but in the event that we get a two, two, and one vote initially, we will take a second vote between the top two candidates to determine the winner or the appointee. Okay, so with that, are there any questions before we get started?
No ma'am.
Okay, well, our first candidate is here, Mr. Robbie Collins. If you would like to come to the interrogation table, I mean, the interview stand. And Board members, just so you'll know, you should have in your packet the questions for each person. Make your notes on there, and we will turn in all of our notes at the end of the process. So, Mr. Collins, per our Board Policy, each candidate will have the opportunity to interview for no longer than 15 minutes. Each candidate will be asked the same six questions, two from me and one from each of the other Board members. Please answer thoughtfully and succinctly so that you will get the opportunity to answer all six questions in our allocated time. Any questions for us before we get going?
No ma'am.
Okay, great. All right, so jumping right in. What skills and experiences or attributes will have you brought to this Board, especially those that might be missing within the current Board of Trustees?
Chairman, first of all, thank you for having me. Thanks for everybody being here this morning. I know this is, you know, an extra meeting for you guys, and y'all are working all the time, so I appreciate you being here. I appreciate you giving us the questions and giving us the schedule so we would know when we would need to be here. And just because of the 15-minute time limit, I have taken some notes, and I'm going to work off my notes pretty closely because I want to get out these ideas that you guys were focused on with these questions. So, thank you. So the skills and experience attributes that we can bring, as a small business owner and a real estate attorney, I've had the opportunity to work with thousands of individuals over the last 20 years to facilitate house closings. I've probably done some closings with you all. My experience in the field has let me, or has allowed me, to help the college and the Board of Trustees with actual practical issues on a regular basis. One of the college's largest financial assets are our real estate holdings, and it's the responsibility of the Board of Trustees to manage those assets. As just one practical example of what I do and what I can add to this Board or the Cape Fear Community College Board, just last month, there was a complex easement matter when one of our benefactors to the college left real estate to the college when they died. I was able to quickly unravel a unique title issue that otherwise would have required outside counsel. This saved both the benefactors, estate, and the college a lot of money in outside legal fees. So that's just something, you know, without an attorney or a real estate attorney on the Board, those are things we're going to have to go to outside counsel for, it's going to cost money. In addition to this specific type of issue, I have practical experience from running a small business for the last 22 years where I manage employees and work out issues on a regular basis. The bottom line's always concerned, so that's something else that I do help with on the Board. Thank you.
Ms. Justice?
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Justice. Good to see you.
Good to see you too. What do you see as the role of the Board of Trustee to the Cape Fear Community College, and how important do you believe an oversight role is to this position?
Again, as a trustee with a legal background, it's very clear that the college president is the only person that's responsible directly to the Board, and that's the Board of Trustees. As a Board, we're not part of the day-to-day administration of the college, but we have the responsibility advising and providing oversight to the college president. I always strive to represent this New Hanover County School Board in a professional manner while keeping in mind the requirements of SACS, which is our accreditation agency. And I'm sure that you guys know all about accreditation agencies and what we have to do to uphold those standards. And thank you for the question.
Ms. Walker?
Okay, Mr. Collins. What responsibility do you think that the Hanover County School appointee has to the Hanover County School Board of Education and the students of the school system?
Again, my responsibility is to represent this school board in a professional manner and to help build the best community college possible to provide a great education at a bargain price to all of our students, all of our local students. I'm sure you all know that tuition at Cape Fear right now is about $1,200. That's the full rate for a 15, 16-hour semester, and that's incredible, and it's an incredible bargain, and it isn't a bargain for the students. Cape Fear Community College is growing at a healthy rate, and that growth is allowing us as a college, the additional funds to further expand our curriculum for the students of this community. So we're doing, we're doing a lot to build that. Thank you.
Mr. Wilderbor?
Mr. Collins, welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you here today.
Nice to see you.
Cape Fear Community College serves our community many ways. Describe how Cape Fear Community College educates all learners to expand our workforce and support economic growth and development.
Great. One of the best things the college has done since I've been on the Board, and you guys know that you all appointed me four years ago to this position, I appreciate that, and it's been a great experience. But one of the best things we've done over the last four years is to continue to improve our relationship with the community. By working directly with the local businesses in this community, we've determined exactly what skills are needed in our community. When I say "we," it's the administration, but it's under the guidance of the Board. And they've gone out into the community, found out what the businesses need and what we can do to help them. This has allowed the college to start new programs and add additional degrees where there's an actual need in the community. Another thing on the same page we've done is we've eliminated some of the programs where there wasn't an actual need. And that was where you had classrooms that had gone on year after year with one or two students, and, you know, or zero students semester after semester. And of course, this did ruffle some feathers with some professors who enjoy teaching no-student classes because, you know, that would make it a little easier on your, on your day-to-day life. But anyway, I'm getting off topic there. But it has allowed us to start new programs. Some of the new programs that we've started are, and I've got a list of them here that I'd love to run through because these are all new and they're all incredibly successful. The Lineman Program, you've probably heard about, it was, it started with 10 students, it's up to like 100 students that are graduating, 100% employed, 50,000 and above pay scale. We have new, a huge expansion of our nursing program. Once again, we went out into the community, and even though we had a nursing program, the hospital said, "We need a lot more nurses." You know, y'all putting out 30 nurses a year is great, we'll hire them all, but if you do 100, we'll hire all of them. And that's what's going on right now with the school. Other programs that you probably haven't heard of are a new welding program, we've got small engine repair, air conditioning. I mean, we all know that you need air conditioning repair guys, that's a huge need, and it just took us going out into the community. We probably could have come up with that on our own, but it took us going out in the community and talking to people. New teacher preparation for both AA and AS programs are coming through. We have also a medical laboratory technician program, and these are just some of the programs that have been added in the last three years. Additionally, we offer tons of continuing education programs, so that also supports our small businesses. Thanks. Thank you, Pete.
Ms. McManus?
Morning, Robbie.
Good morning.
Might have a Wake Forest graduate here.
It's good to see you.
Good to be seen. How can New Hanover County Schools and Cape Fear Community College work together to best serve our students, including those with disabilities and special needs?
Collaboration and teamwork between Cape Fear Community College and New Hanover County Schools is crucial to all the student success, including the, I'm sorry, I'm reading your question back to you. It's crucial to all our student success. The teamwork between the school system and the college has already responsible for programs like CTEC and early college programs. I can't go out and meet parents of a successful student without them telling me which program their student was in. Nobody just went, you know, the successful students, and I'm hearing about, they didn't just go to Hager, to Hanover, or Laney. They were in, you know, this program, or this program, or this other program, and it's incredible, and it's overwhelming to me. I have small kids, and I'm looking forward to going through this and figuring out which is the best, hopefully they'll be successful, so hopefully they'll be in some of those programs. But I know the programs cover the whole spectrum. The teamwork is great, that's working together. I think our collaboration can only get better. The question was hard for me because I'm sorry that I'm unaware of the special needs that aren't being addressed at Cape Fear Community College, and I open the floor to any of you to tell me, and I'm happy to take notes right now, you know, what special needs are not being addressed at the community college.
Yes, don't do that.
Can we have that conversation offline?
Absolutely.
That's not appropriate for the interview.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's all right. A good lawyer always gives stretches out there, so.
Yeah, and Judy, I'll find you on Facebook or anything, and you can absolutely reach out to me.
Well, you know, I'm not sure if you understand the definition when we talk about special needs programs. Are you aware of what we're referring to, exceptional children?
So Judy, this is not appropriate to do that because we're not going to do that with all the other candidates unless you plan on doing that.
Yes. Never mind, I'm sorry.
Let's talk offline about it. I mean, and literally online, you know, you know you can find me.
Well, I was just concerned if you were aware, special needs programs are especially classified students with disabilities? That's what we're referring to.
That's what I was referring to as well. Absolutely, and, you know, and I just went to the graduation where we had, you know, students in wheelchairs that graduated right along with everybody else. And I understand there's a ton of special needs, and it's across the Board, but I just wasn't aware of the ones that we were missing, so, and I think that we would address anything that was brought to the attention of the Board, and it would be corrected immediately. And so please advise me or any of your advisors anytime. Thank you.
We can follow up with you, Mr. Collins.
Absolutely. Or the next Board member.
Yeah. Okay, last question.
Yes.
The New Hanover County Schools values the voices of its students, staff, and faculty. And as a Cape Fear Community College trustee, what strategies would you recommend to encourage and strengthen those relationships at CFCC?
Another really fair question. In my experience, the administration, the staff, and the students have a great open line of communication at Cape Fear Community College. If any of y'all, and I know you have, seen us online or whatever, if you've attended a Board meeting in the last few years, you're aware from their monthly reports how closely our faculty president, our student body president, and President Morton work together on a regular basis. Additionally, the Board of Trustees works with President Morton every month to improve these relationships with both our staff and the students. President Morton is currently in the middle of a cycle of meetings with every department one-on-one for this purpose, and a recent staff-wide survey came back with very positive feedback from the professors. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I give just a, is my 15 minutes up?
You have, yes. No, no, you're not, you have like two minutes.
Okay, quickly, let me run through some things that are going good at Cape Fear Community College that you may or may not be aware of. The enrollment over the last four years, and this is, I mean, a big part due to President Morton because he's been there about five years, but over the same four years, nearly all of the other 55 community colleges have lost students due to COVID. Our enrollment is up specifically 3.2% this spring, 4% this summer, and we're already up 1% for the fall semester, and we're just started taking applications for it. In the last four years, we've gone from the seventh largest to the fifth largest community college in the state, which is a huge jump on a list that usually doesn't change. You know, all these colleges stay the same. Our giving, our charitable giving to the college has doubled from a million to 2 million, and that's from the people that have been put in place to run those organizations. And that money, that 2 million, just goes directly back to scholarships. Something like 50% of our students get financial scholarships from the college itself. All of this success sitting on accident, the president, along with the support of the Board of Trustees, the faculty, and the students have worked together to make it happen, and that's it. Thank you all for allowing me the last four years to be on this, a part of this success story. It has been a really neat Board to be a part of, going in the same direction, and if you'll appoint me back to this Board, we'll keep it on track, and this success, I think, will continue. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Collins. We appreciate you being here. So you're welcome to stay and listen. You can, you know, get a link if you want to listen while you're onto your next business venture.
That's what I'm going to have to do because I do have to get right back to work, and I really appreciate you guys working with me to schedule it early this morning. Thank you all. How many candidates do we have? Is that public information?
Three.
Three. All right. Well, thanks so much, Stephanie. I appreciate it, all of you. Have a great day, and I hope y'all get it done really quickly.
We will. Thank you. Okay, you've got just a minute. Take a deep breath. We want to find the questions to get you. Thank you, if you want to ask that.
Yeah, I wrote myself a plate down.
But it's different than what you asked. This is what they got. They're prepared.
They're prepared.
Do you want to use a chair? Does anybody need more time to make any notes on their papers? Okay. All right, then, let's go. Let's roll into second one. Jennifer?
Thank you for having me today.
Thank you for coming.
I appreciate seeing everybody. And you know what I forgot to do with the last one for us to introduce ourselves? We all have our signs, but you want to just start with Judy?
Hi, I'm Judy.
Hi.
Last name, Justice.
Yes, I am.
Hey, I'm Stephanie Walker. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Stephanie Graybill. Nice to meet you.
Good morning, I'm Pete Wilderbor.
Nice to meet you.
Good morning, you, McManus.
Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you.
I pinned you last year at Hoggart's graduation, and I was so scared that I was going to stab you with the pin, that I was shaking. I was like, this is not the one I should be stabbing.
He's my lawyer.
Yeah, now that I've met him, I'm like, oh no.
All right, so, the teacher, I mean. Ms. Robbins? The, so you were here when I read the instructions before. Do you have any questions before we go? Would you want me to read it again?
No ma'am.
Okay. All right, so then we'll just go ahead and start here. What skills or experiences or attributes will you bring to this position, especially those that might be missing with the current Board of Trustees?
So looking at the Board of Trustees, we have eight of the 11 members are business owners or business-related, and I am a high school history teacher. I teach at Hoggart, so I am very student-focused. So I always say that I have a business mind, but education's in my heart. So I think that may be something that is missing that I can bring, especially when we look at all students, because I'm part of MTSS. I teach stay, but I also teach AP World History. I'm in charge of National Honor Society. So I have a large spectrum of children that I interact with daily that have very similar questions about the future, and I have a direct contact with what the kids need, and that's why I show up every day, for what they need.
Can I just add a quick, are you, did you just say that you are a current teacher?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Shive, how do we do this? Because current employees of the school system are not eligible for this position. I'm not quite certain how that got through. When I was looking at your resume, it said that you were done in 20, in one, 2022. That's what it said.
One of Atlanta. So that is very weird. I'm so sorry.
Okay, so I don't think that we should continue with the interview if you're not eligible.
Correct, since I'm not eligible.
I'm so sorry. I read through the whole thing, and I was looking, and it looked on your resume, maybe it was a typo that said that you, your employment as a social studies teacher ended in January of 2022.
I saw that.
Is she technically employed by the Board?
She's in, the policy says, the policy says employed by us, and so all employees are employed by us. Colin, would you care to weigh in on that?
The policy says that employees of the school system are ineligible, then it seems pretty fine.
Yes.
It doesn't exactly say that.
Yes, it does. Let me pull it up.
It says here, while currently inquired, question appoint is not a member of the Board, is not employed by the Board, is a resident of the county.
A person, aren't all New Hanover County Schools employees, employees of the Board?
I want to take a look at the policy directly. Can you tell me the policy number?
Yeah, it's 2660. Hang on, I'm so sorry. I just want to make sure, I don't want to waste anyone's time and do that. Yeah, it's 2660.
Number two, Cape Fear, oh, under B, number two.
One, two, three, four. It's in the fourth line. If anybody wants to, we also have a copy of that if you guys would like to look at it as well.
Sorry, does that mean technically every employee of the district is an employee of the Board?
Yes, it does.
But we don't?
We only hired the superintendent, but all of the employees are employees of our Board.
Employee, yeah. So if anyone in, all school system employees are employed by the Board. That's correct.
Okay. All right, so I am so sorry. Your resume was very impressive, and it, but you're not eligible this time. But we do value what you're doing right now, being in the classroom.
That's probably the most important place to be anyway.
This is a tough time, and we certainly value what you're doing.
It was just an opportunity, a bridge.
Yeah, you definitely had my ear because the kids at Cape Fear need to have, maybe we need to look at this.
Well, we can, but we will put that as another follow-up. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting your effort in.
We're sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm glad you did the stab, Mr. McManus.
Thanks for what you did. Thanks for the job.
Oh, of course. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You can give me a second. I need you to have a pin. Bye.
Well, we, we got on a break since now. Can we be on a pause while we're waiting for other person to come? Okay. All right, so we're going to take a little break while we're waiting for our third candidate to arrive. So we'll be back with you. Ms. Bowie, what time is his interview?
Is it 9:20?
Okay, so we will be back with you about 9:20 if you are watching online. Thank you.
Are we supposed to?
No, okay, we can just, yeah. I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.[1702.51]
... Excuse me. I'm doing a P.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, we have, um...
If you wish me to leave so you want to talk among yourselves.
We converted this over, Crystal, when did we convert this over? Probably about eight years ago. Um, which was high school, so.
Library. Kim in library.
... out of education. They don't let me come back because of Sister Postmark. And so I said, okay. And they came here for a year as a sister postmark. At the end of the year.
Okay. The, um, can we just make sure that Mr. Shive is ready?
It was late.
Okay, folks. It's 9:20, so we're going to go ahead and call ourselves back into order. Appreciate everybody giving us that time. So our next candidate is Ray Funderburke III. And Mr. Funderburke, I'm going to just, since you weren't here at 8:30 when we went over all the ground rules, I'm going to go ahead and read those again for you, just so that you're clear on how the process works. So each candidate will have 15 minutes per our Board Policy 2660, Board Appointments to the Outside Committees. You will answer the same six questions from all of the board members. We've already selected our questions, so we're ready for you. At the conclusion of the interview, you're welcome to stay and listen to the, our discussion and deliberation and how we vote. Voting will be done, excuse me, by ballot, and we will all, we will each select our top candidate, and our board clerk, Ms. Bowie, will tally those, and then we'll know who we have, and we take a vote to ratify that. So the, back to the 15-minute part for you individually, is that per our policy, there's no longer than 15 minutes, so I would encourage you to speak succinctly and, but thoroughly, to make sure that you get the opportunity to answer all six of our questions. Do you have any questions about that process?
None at all, ma'am.
Okay. And then I would just like to remind our board members that we, in order to be fair to all candidates, that we need to stick to the questions that are asked and, and the format that we agree to.
Excuse me.
Okay, so, yes, ma'am.
I think it's totally fair, though, to elaborate on an answer when it pertains to the original question, if you have further questions about that question.
The, Mr. Shive advised that so that no employee, that no candidate gets a unfair advantage, that we stick to the questions that we've agreed to, and then we can follow up with that kind of question, because his question was just related to our question.
Okay, I'm not quite sure what you said, but, okay.
Okay, so, all right, we're ready to roll, Mr. Funderburke.
Yes, ma'am.
What skills, experiences, or attributes will you bring to this board, especially those that might be missing from our current Board of Trustees?
I would suggest that my background, which I talked about on my resume and my letter, covers both sides of what Cape Fear's stated goals and mission are. I spent 15, 16 years doing, training for employees of large companies all over the country. I did everything from safety training on up to operator training, custom-developed training for startups, for existing operations, any kind of training that's available. So I'm very familiar with that side of what Cape Fear's mission is, which is, I think it's called workforce development. The other side, the pre-bacculare, pre-bacculare, it's easy for me to say, is I taught high school, sent a lot of kids to Cape Fear, wrote recommendations for scholarships in Pender County for 14 years. I also taught at UNCW a couple of years, and I taught at Cape Fear as an adult education teacher when it first started in, oh, when I, when I first started working in Burgaw in 1974, and I hope that doesn't date me too badly. So I understand both sides of Cape Fear's mission, and I also value both sides equally. Everybody today talks about, yeah, you got to, there are other ways you can work in the world. I fully understand that. When there weren't any jobs here in 1977, I worked at GE as a welder on the floor, I worked shift work. So I understand both sides of that, and I bring that. I don't know if there are many people on the board now that could say that.
Thank you. Ms. Justice?
Uh, yes, good morning again.
Good morning.
Yeah. What do you see as the role of the Board of Trustees to the Cape Fear Community College, and how important do you believe an oversight role is in that position?
Oversight is their position. It's very much like what you do with the school system. The board essentially is there as the, I suspect in a lot of ways, the court of last resort for many of the employees or students who are upset with what's going on. They also supervise the supervisors at Cape Fear, the president and the upper-level people. And I think one of the, the big things they have to do, which you, you all have to do, is, is that board has to be an advocate for Cape Fear Community College. Everyone on that has to stand up and say, we have a valuable institution here, and we're doing everything to make it better in the community. I do not think that, I don't believe in micromanagement. You know, they have to delegate people to do something and, to do things, and hold them accountable, and that's where it goes, as far as I... My father used to say, you delegate authority and retain responsibility, and I believe in that.
Okay, Ms. Walker?
Okay. What responsibility do you think New Hanover County Schools' appointee has to the, to the Board of Education and the students of this school system?
You know, I liked that question when I saw it, because when I was teaching at Pender, we were bringing in Cape Fear people, and our kids were going, started going to Cape Fear Community College. And I was an AP teacher, and I also taught on, on-level courses. And I observed how it was done, and I will say, at first, I wasn't comfortable with it. Because my, part of my discomfort was, we were sending sometimes young girls that may have gone to Cape Fear Community College around much older men, and I didn't like that. They were taking classes at Cape Fear, coexisting with Pender, and that, that, I wasn't comfortable with that as, as a teacher, as an adult, as a father. I realized that it is a valuable asset to supplement school systems. Not take the place of the school system, but tho, those courses, and I may be wrong here, I don't believe cost the school system anything. And the teachers don't cost the school system anything. So you can add variety, you can add a number of things to what you all offer, to what we offer, but there's got to be oversight, and you've got to make sure that it's done properly. And I was comfortable at the end, but as I said, I had some discomfort in the beginning. I taught a lot of kids who were co-enrolled, they did a good job, and I was happy with it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Waterborne?
I'm Chair, and again, welcome, Mr. Funderburke. Good to have you here today.
Thank you, sir.
Cape Fear Community College serves, serves our community in many ways. Describe how Cape Fear Community College educates all learners to expand our workforce to support economic growth and development in this area.
A lot of people don't know that one of the biggest parts of Cape Fear Community College is the workforce development, in other words, the lineman's school. I had, I taught so many young men, who are now linemen, making good money. I taught young men and women who are now in the nuclear safety business because of Cape Fear Community College. There are advanced hands-on classes for machining that kids, I remember writing recommendations for, that kids got in to Cape Fear. So that's, that's a big part of what they do, and I've seen it in operation. My kid, I, when I say my kids, I apologize to everyone, the kids that I taught. But I see them now on Facebook, and they're doing really well. They've done well in the world because of Cape Fear Community College. And that part of it, and every, a lot of people tend to see the community college as the avenue toward a higher education that's economical, and that's good, but it also creates a workforce that I've seen and am comfortable with. And when new companies come in, they can come to Cape Fear and say, we need people that can do this. Can you do this for us? And that's very important, and I'm very familiar with that side of it. Trying to talk fast, sorry.
Mr. McFens?
Good morning. Thank you for being here. How can New Hanover County Schools and Cape Fear Community College work together to best serve our students, including those with disabilities and special needs, and the juggling of New Hanover County Schools' scheduling arena and Cape Fear Community College's schedule?
It's interesting, that's an issue, the juggling of schedules, because a lot of kids in New Hanover County will have a class at Cape Fear Community College and have to get back to Hagerd or New Hanover or Lanier, wherever they go to school, in time for their next class. I think both institutions, both organizations have to work together. New Hanover County has made early strides on the school side by changing your schedule so you match the community college schedule, which I think makes a big difference. I also think that in a lot of ways, Cape Fear Community College has ways, has methods and ability to take care of or teach kids with disabilities, more so than a lot of schools, because they've got more modern buildings and buildings that have been built. I mean, Hagerd has, has been around for a long time. My kids went to Ashley, which is essentially the newest high school in the county, but they have the ability and the wherewithal to teach those kids, and that can be smaller classes, which helps kids with disabilities. High schools, head counts, if you've been a principal, you know that, you end up with thirty, I've, I've seen 35 people in a class. It's hard to help kids who need special help when you do that. But Cape Fear Community College has a little more leeway in doing that, and they also offer the remote learning and things like that on a regular basis that help those kids. The other thing that is, and these are not kids with disability, one of the things that's close to my heart, I work with Edelmer Segovia at UNCW, and, are Hispanic kids. I taught some brilliant Hispanic kids. They didn't speak English well, but my Spanish was not nearly as good as their English, and they were brilliant kids. And I think Cape Fear Ca, uh, Community College is doing a great job with a lot of Hispanic kids, and, and that's my understanding.
Great, thank you. Okay, last question, and you're right on time, so you're good. New Hanover County Schools values the voices of its students, staff, and faculty. As a Cape Fear Community College trustee, what strategies would you recommend to encourage and strengthen those relationships at Cape Fear Community College?
One of the first things I thought of when I thought about this job was Talk to a Trustee Day, seriously speaking. Go down, sit in a classroom once every couple of months, and be open to anybody who would want to talk, come in and talk to you, faculty, students, administration, and say, what's going on here? Tell me, I'm not here to talk to you, you guys tell me what's going on, I'd like to know. The other thing I think is very important is you be familiar with every part of the... If I, I got the job, I would tour every part of the campus, because I don't know much about the north campus at all, and I would be interested in seeing every place where kids go to learn, what's going on there, so if it's, if there's a reference at a meeting, I could see it in my head and know what's going on. That doesn't come directly from me. The old man, my father, used to talk about his father, who was superintendent of schools in New Hanover County, and say that his dad would visit schools, both, both school systems of which he was superintendent of at that time, it was a segregated school system, he would visit both the black schools and, and white schools, and thought it was very important to know everybody in those cases, and, and that has stayed with me. You, you've got to know what's going on. I don't mean snooping on people, I mean being aware of what's going on. It's, it's not a political thing as much as it's a research thing. So you can answer questions if you're asked.
Okay, well, that concludes our questions. You do have about three more minutes, if there's any information that you would like to add.
Yeah, I have been retired a few years. I've helped out pretty much, one of the things I've done since I've retired is take care of, hang out with my grandchildren, this has been wonderful, and work with UNCW and the Hispanic kids. I actually have taught some of the Hispanic kids in the county, pre-ACT stuff, pre-SAT stuff, to get them ready, to get them up to, and pre-college stuff. What's it like to go to college? Because if you don't have a parent who went to college, you don't know a darn thing about college. And I realize that I can offer a lot now. I'm strong, I'm still doing a lot, and education in my family, as I've mentioned, is part of our DNA. So that's what prompted me to do this, to say, ah, I need something to do in retirement. No, it wasn't that, it was, I'd like to help out, and there are kids, and I can help out, I've got some abilities to do that. And that's what pushed me. I really appreciate your time, thank you all, and this has been fun.
Thank you for coming in, for sure.
Yep, so you are welcome to stay around while we deliberate, and we will take just a few minutes to do that, we will vote, and we will have the appointee selected, you know, very shortly.
Am I the last one?
You're the last one, yes, sir.
Oh.
Yeah, we only had three.
Okay.
So, yeah, so you're welcome to sit, or you could, like, go wander around, come back in in a minute.
I'd be curious to, to see what you say, if that's all right.
Yep, you're perfectly fine.
Enjoy.
Okay, so, um, so go back to our process, the, is there any conversation that anybody would like to have, or about either of our two candidates that remain, or do you want to just go straight to the vote?
I would like to talk about the process.
Okay. What, what, we've already, we've already approved the agenda, and we approved the voting process.
I'm not talking about voting.
What process?
I'm talking about the transactional process that seems to be taking place too often in these kinds of situations.
All right, Judy, I'm, I'm going to have to stop you, because we are, we are not here to talk about the process.
That's part of picking people.
Can we just get to voting, then?
Yeah.
Just do a round of voting?
Yeah.
Let's do voting.
Yes, yes.
Go ahead and vote.
Okay.
Are we doing by number or by name?
By name.
By name, okay.
By name, so everybody has a blue card, so if you would write down the name of the candidate that you would like to see as our appointee, then, and do that, and then, Ms. Bowie, would you come collect those for us?
Do you want to put our names on the records or public records?
Yes, mm-hmm.
Put our names on it?
Yeah.
Okay, there you go.
Because they're not secret, we're just doing it easier to just, for collection And then once we have that, then we do have to vote to accept.
Yeah, we didn't do that.
Right, we didn't, we didn't do that last year. It was implied, obvious. All right, so give us just a minute for Ms. Bowie to collect those.
Somebody put your name on it. She's coming back.
I didn't put my name on it.
You didn't?
But she knows my handwriting.
Is it unique?
You can't read this sign.
Okay, there you go, she knows. Didn't you say you wanted to be a doctor at one point?
That would have been perfect, because after, chicken scratch.
Didn't you say at one point you were going to go to med school and changed your mind?
At one point, that's what I wanted to, yes.
You had, so you practiced the handwriting early.
Did you go to Wake Forest, Hugh? I don't think my handwriting has ever been legible.
Did you go to Wake Forest?
Yes, sir.
That's the problem right there, right?
Yeah. No, my grandfather graduated from there.
My father went away, but he actually played basketball away.
In 1909, when it was at the real Wake Forest, this was my grand...
Well, that was college, I was at the, St. Wake Forest, North Carolina.
Yes.
And my father went to the old Wake, now Southeastern Theological Seminary.
Mm-hmm.
But he graduated in '30.
Okay.
And then he went to Buckminster, South Carolina.
I was visiting early on when John Collins was a partner with Mr. Hewitt. I was there, and Mr. Hewitt said, your grandfather picked me up hitchhiking home from Wake Forest in the third, I thought that was funny.
I used to holler, but it was all dairy lads.
All right, are we ready?
I think we are, yeah.
Okay, so Ms. Bowie has handed me the card that has been certified by our accounting firm, and it looks like Mr. Funderburke received five votes, so. Awesome.
I'd be very proud.
Don't clap yet, we have to have a vote. So let's just make sure that we, we do that right, otherwise I'll forget. So do I hear a motion to appoint Mr. Funderburke as our, let me finish the motion, as our Cape Fear Board of Trustees?
I'll second.
Okay, you second me. I salute.
Okay, so you're moving, you're seconding, okay, I'm all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nay. All right, so now we can all clap.
Thank you very much, and I will do my best to represent you all as every faculty of the...
Yes, we, very impressive, yes.
What you said made my heart warm, that's what the school needs. Of course, I'm too, a retired teacher, so.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is the part that I, I don't know what we do next. Do you handle all of the onboard, getting all the information? All right, so you will get information from Ms. Bowie, our board clerk.
Yes, ma'am.
And describing what you do next, and they will let the folks know over there. And your term starts July the 1st, is that right? Yes.
Thank you.
So you have a little bit of time to breathe, and enjoy that retirement for just one more month, and.
I got out of retirement, too.
Yeah, I know.
So thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much. I like to talk about...
I would like to call this meeting adjourned, so.
Second, whatever, you don't have to.
You're, you and Kenny Keith.